Good morning. Welcome to the special call meeting of Williamsburg County Council. This is today's date is February the 11th, 2022, and is scheduled for 10 o'clock a.m. Please be advised that in an effort to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 or coronavirus, the upcoming Williamsburg County meetings will allow only 30 people. But also, if you would like to, the public may also join in the council meeting by dialing 1-877-309-2073, and the access code is 590-380-589. That's the access code. So we're discussing, the meeting today is to discuss the proposed redistricting plans for Williamsburg County. Now, at this time, we're going to call this meeting to order, and I'm going to ask that we have invocation by Councilman Floyd.
Let us pray. Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we bow before you this morning as your humble servant, giving all the glory to you. We thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to gather in this building, Lord. We ask now, Lord, that you give us wisdom, looking forward to the future for prosperous Williamsburg County, and we ask that all the decisions we make this morning be pleasing in your sight. And we ask all these blessings in the precious name of Jesus, our Savior. Amen.
Amen. Okay, as I forestated, we're here today to take a look at some proposed redistricting plans for the county of Williamsburg. And this phase, we're going to have some discussions on several proposed plans. So at this time, the floor is open now for any council member that have any concerns. And to my understanding, there were a few council members that had some concerns about the proposed plans. So at this time, would anyone have anything to say or like to voice your opinion or views on the proposed plan that you've viewed?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to somehow or another, I don't know what, we have a draft that was done by the state. And I would just propose that they would go back to give us another draft that would reflect more of what we had the previous years with the most minimum changes that we would have to make to make sure that we stay within those standard deviations for voting that we need to do.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wilson. That was Councilman Wilson. And he said he would like for the plan that we have shows what the state has presented to us. And he was stating that he would like to see more of a plan that would reflect the way it was pre-prison population being excluded and pre-redistricting plans. So that was his concern. And also, I would like to say, I have a concern as well. I think a part of the problem was the prison being included in our population count. And I too, like Mr. Wilson, would like to see a time when we, pre-prison coming in, how the districts were the last time we had redistricting. We would like to take a look at that as well. So I guess what I'm saying is, at least that one person has some problems with the plan that was presented by the state. Now, does anyone else have any comments?
Yes, sir. Yes, let's chair. I have some concerns about it as well. I would like for us to go back and revisit and possibly submit a new drawing.
Okay.
That is my concern. So I second Mr. Wilson.
Okay, all right. Mr. Floyd, I think I heard you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, you recall back in, I think it was November, I'm not sure, Mr. Frank Rainwater, the Executive Director of the South County Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office, along with Mr. Paul Athie, presented us with some information, gave a breakdown of the numbers concerning districting and stuff. We discussed it with them, however, they did not provide us with any maps. You recall that meeting we had?
Not specifically, but
You don't recall that?
No, I don't know.
I recall coming down here and you don't remember them giving us?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, 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 yeah.
All right. I took it upon myself to call them several weeks ago, a week or so ago, and ask them about this map. So I called Mr. Rainwater, Executive Director, and he was not in, so I called Mr. Athie. And at the time, you know, I think there was some confusion as to who was going to be drawing the redistricting maps, and I'm not here to lay blame on anybody. It's neither here nor there, we beyond that. But I said, I asked them, is it illegal to include the prison population? 10 years ago, this is the map Mr. Bobby Bowers presented us. I had it in a file in my office. I still have it. Has the population, has the map. Bobby Bowers presented that to here, this governing body, and I think you and I were the only ones on council at that time. I think the rest of the council is a new council.
Right.
And I asked him, I said, is it illegal to include the prison population? The answer was, it's not illegal, but court cases have had a tendency not to favor that. I said, but is it illegal? He said, no, it's up to you. I said, I would like a map that included the prison population and one that did not include the prison population. I received a map from them that did not include the prison population. I have not received one to date that did include the prison population. So it's up to this body. It's up to y'all. If y'all want to, let's request one that includes it. It's up to you. If you want to go with what you got, it's up to you. I'm just giving you up to face, play by play, of what's taking place to this point. So it's up to, it's up to the council discretion, according to myself. Ms. McFadden was in my office, Ms. Helen McFadden, and to Mr. Athie as to whether we include it or not. We can include it or exclude it. That's totally up to this body.
Right.
Nothing in stone saying it is illegal. I'll say that.
So it's not illegal? You're saying, based upon what you received from Mr. Rainwater or whomever, they're saying the prison can be included or cannot be included?
That is correct.
All right. And to my understanding, what caused, I know you redistrict periodically, but a big part of this was because of the prison population at some times being included, and now it was not included.
That's correct.
So if it were to go back, basically, how it was pre-prison?
About 1,400 people that are included, it's 1,390 something.
Okay. Well, I saw, something says 998 prison population. I don't know where that came from, but I didn't see a thousand almost, but I saw 998. It wasn't 14 on the documents that I saw. But if we were to go back, basically, maybe not the same, basically to what it was pre-prison population, the only two districts that would be affected would have been my district, District 4 and District 3. Because what they did, when they included the prison population, they accommodated for that by shifting some of my people out of my district into District 3. And so what I was wondering, how difficult would it be if we were to basically go back to pre-prison population and do not include the prisoners? But I guess that's something we'll have to get clarification from them.
That's correct.
Yes.
The map that you have in front of you is what's presented, not including
The prison, right.
I can't answer the question what it's going to look like including it, because I don't have a map to that effect. I've requested one, but I don't have it.
How long ago, Mr. Floyd, did you request it?
It was, he sent me an email. It was last week, Councilman Woods. He sent me an email, because I knew the March 15th deadline was coming up. It was sent to me. His response to me was on February the 3rd, Thursday, February the 3rd. And so it would have been, I would say between the first and the third. I don't remember exactly which day it was, Councilman Woods.
I have another question.
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Floyd.
Now, I've got cars finding with him, because we are under a tight deadline.
Yeah, you can take over. Sam, let them explain.
This is his email to me, or text message to me yesterday at 10:49 a.m. After I called, I went back and read in detail the map and all of the supporting information. It clearly states that in the discretion of council, they may or may not include the prison. By all means, we need a map with the prison included for the council to discuss. So I've got a 10:30 meeting at the airport. I'm supposed to meet somebody. I got somebody coming up from Franklin County. I apologize. As y'all know, this meeting was a kind of a last minute thing. And like I said, I got a fellow driving two hours to meet me out there. But it's whatever y'all decide. But what you have, I just want to be clear, you got one right now. It does not include the prison population. If you want one, that's up to you. If you don't, that's up to you too. I'm not
And the thing you read?
As y'all was calling.
The email you got, the email that you said you got yesterday, didn't you read a part in there that said something about, the latter part of that you read, Sam? It said something about including, something about the prison population?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Not having it in it?
My email?
Yeah, the email that you got from, on yesterday.
No, that was a text message from Mr. Jenkinson on yesterday. I got an email on February 3rd from the Department of State. It says, I received your information from Paul Athie. I wanted to follow up on your request. Our GS department will be working to draft a plan to send to you review. We will hope to have this to you by the end of next week. For your reference, the benchmark report was sent. Williamsburg County, September 27th, is attached. As you are aware, filing county council candidates opens March 16th, which leaves only six weeks to finalize the redistricting process. Due to this short timeline, any requests including draft adjustments must be submitted to our office no later than close of business Thursday, February 17th. This deadline will follow our F.A. to respond to all requests and provide final drafts by March the 3rd. Please understand, this is a hard timeline. We apologize for any inconvenience or hardship this may cause. With the March 3rd deadline, this should allow time for your local election commission to prepare the filing opening as March 16th. And it said, additionally, I understand you requested information regarding court cases about prison population and redistricting. The below link will take you to the presentation of our website that will have that information listed on page 25. And the link is census and redistricting present to sc.gov.
But I thought there was also something read that said, it's not illegal to include the population? I thought you read something
That's what I read from a text message.
Counsel could decide, you say, whether we want to include or not.
This is his text message he sent me.
Not the state, okay, gotcha.
That would have been confused.
Jenkinson sent me a text that all, after I called, I went back and read in detail the map and all the supporting information. It clearly states that in discretion of council, that may or may not include the prison. That was what he said. So it's in the discretion of council.
Okay, but Sam, this, what I'm hearing is that this is the map that the state sent.
Would it be possible if we just conduct a quick recess so that we all can kind of get on the same page of music? Can we have a motion for that? So we can review all the maps and then we can discuss it from that point?
Guys, I apologize, but I'm going to have to excuse myself.
Yes, sir, I understand.
I will be available by phone if anybody has a question to call me.
That's fine. Can we get a motion for recess?
Make a motion for recess?
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of recess, please take a five by raising your hand. Oppositions the same. We are now in recess.
Hi. We are, I need a motion for us to come out of recess.
Some more minutes.
Second.
Any discussion hearing them? We are back on our regular, our special call meeting. Okay, so if you all will look at this, just for the, let the record show, the idea of them to fix, or I should say, them to redraw for making another recommendation to the state as to the way that they wanted to go. That's what we're working on right now, because obviously, the recommendation that came from the state is not going to be suitable for the members of council at this time. So, in this case, we are looking for a solution and have another solution already prepared, that was prepared a few days ago when this map first surfaced. So, we're going to work through that and tweak that. Once we tweak through that, we will get that information lined up, send it to the Ms. Edith once she gets in today, and we will check our numbers before sending it to the state, so that the state can check, can check or figure out our deviation and make sure we're within that 10 percent. At this point, we are not looking for this to affect anyone in District One, and District Two, or in District Seven at this point. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
All right, so, right now, we're just going to be working with between District Five, Three, and Four, Five, Four, and Three, and Six. All right. As you all know, Councilman Floyd had to leave. He's already given his portion of the area that he can give up to help us meet the numbers. But at this time, we are not entertaining the ideal of having this, including a prison population unless it is so absolutely necessary. But we are not entertaining that idea now. We're looking for it within our voters that are there. All right, so can you all see the screen at this time?
Yes.
All right, this area here, if I zoom out, I have the areas that we're going to be discussing kind of pulled out of here. And one of them, obviously, is the main area where Mr. Woods is, which is this area over here. And then down in this area is Mr. Miller's area here, and this is Councilwoman Hammond's area here, and this is Councilman Floyd's area here. What I can do is I can add color to these so that you all can better see him. Is that what you need? Think so?
Yes, if you can.
Okay. Okay. Let's bring the colors. A little bit more color. All right, I think I have them all here. Three and each turn you on. And seven does not need to be on. Okay. Little better? All right, so, the green, obviously, is District Six. All right, and I'm going to start there, so that you all can see that this is the area that was given up by Councilman Floyd. All right, so pretty much, his area that he's, he's provided for us, it runs across Covington, down through Manning Highway, and it picks up right about in this area here. And everything that's to the left of this area, all these, this area is the area that he's giving up that to help would meet the shortfall in Councilman Woods' area. And that's our, you know, our Mary Road, Emile, and Chance Road, Mary Road, et cetera. Old Gapway Road is also included in that, as well as portions of Dutchneck Road. Actually, Dutchneck really doesn't have a whole lot of voters on it, so he's giving up that entire road. Also, down in this area here, Rocky Ford and Chapman area is what he's also giving up. Do y'all kind of share that area now? So, just to zoom out of that, that area alone gives us, I should have counted the number of people that it gives us, but you all have that handout with the numbers that are in, on each road in each district. That's up, being questioned right now. All right, so, obviously, the purple area is Mr. Woods' district. Now, this is the Mr. Miller's district, who has a good bit of population in it. And I think what we need to do here is Mr. Miller, focus area is here. Trying to zoom in so you can see the... All right, so, the first, the recommendation that we made today that I got the maps done for, it takes into account traveling from Coastline Road down to Marion Church, right there, to, taking in account all of these roads that are located within this area. And it goes from everything with, and let me show you the direction of what we're talking about. Need to zoom in just a little bit more. This screen is so small, y'all, I'm sorry. It's difficult to see, but, so it takes into account, he's actually starting here on, not there, coming down Coastline Road, and taking up a portion of Dixie Road, all of Dixie Road, of this area, this part of Martin Luther King Road. Again, Coastline Road stops about, stops about here, and it routes itself over to this area here, which is Marion Church Road. And from Marion Church Road, it goes all the way down to Seaboard Road, which is this main road here. Now, the part that Mr. Miller now asks some question on is this community that's here. And we'll have to redraw this. But as you can tell, this is a big area. It's the Horseshoe he talked about. A lot of roads are in this community here, which is his base, usually, probably. So, you see, these are the streets that are in there. Mr. Miller, can you see them good? If I stop flicking? And it goes, your, that boundary? Right, would be, so where do you want us to look? Exactly. So, where do you want us to slice the pie up at? You want us to look at? Here? So, are you looking at us to pretty much stop at about right here? This area here? Because all of this is included in Plan B. All of these roads, to include Blakely Road. So, this is about as, as, as much as we, we go into your, your district in this direction. Yeah, so you, where do you want the cut, cutoff point at? Right, that's what we want. Yes. We don't have the numbers until you get me an area where you want us to look for. So, if you say, take off Blakely Road, then I know we got to find 96 votes somewhere else, because it's 96 potential voters on that road. So, if you say, no, I kind of want to, you know, perhaps?
So, if we look, if we look at the other roads and add up those, we can probably come up with 96 votes, huh?
So, where do we want to go? So, what part do you want us to stop? So, I can say, in this area, he doesn't, he wants to keep Blakely, Taff Road, Winter Road, and we take that off. So, I say, okay, at that point, it may, it may be about, you know, two, 300, maybe, or 100 or so voters plus with those, all these roads that's in here. And then we'll look for them somewhere else. So, Councilwoman Hammond may say, well, you guys can look at this part for me. It's just a part of us just breaking it up. But in order for me to know how to ask Edith how many people we have on there, I got to know where you guys want me to start or stop with the map.
Marion Church Road.
Okay. So, you want to include, keep that in, or? Okay. So, we got, that's as far inland into your area we want to go is Marion Church. So, we got Marion Church, Dixie, Savannah, a little bit more of Thurgood, of US Highway 521.
Marion Church got 41.
Mm-hmm.
Dixie got 22. Dixie? 22?
So, so, you only want to lose Blakely Road? Is that what you're saying? I mean, you only want to keep just Blakely Road? Okay, so there's going to be a whole lot more votes. If you tell me what line on the map that you want me to stop at, then I will add up how many that portion of people gave, and then that's when we start looking for how much we're going to need somewhere else. Okay, so that's your stop point. Okay. So, what we need to do is we have to go in there and pull up everything from you, a portion of, we can take a percentage of US Highway 21, Nice Avenue, Corner Avenue, Horseshoe Road, Hector Road, all of those, I need to add them up and see how many they yielded, because this is the part you want to keep. Buttercup Road, Seabrook Road, Blakely Road, Paris Road, Penny Road. So, once we pull these out, then we'll know where we need to search for somewhere else at, because that's where the bulk of everyone is.
We can always go back and move that line.
Mm-hmm. I'm just trying to get you all some, some preliminary numbers. I mean, it may not check out either way. I mean, it may not check out either way, so... So, so pretty much Marion Church Road is our draw line. And we can keep everything within there. So we can keep Union Road, this portion of Martin Luther King Highway, Columbia Road, Coastline Road. How do you feel about Morning Star Road? Summer, what I need from you all is, if you will, just give me a blown-up version. It's going to be impossible for you to do it on your computer. Alright, so this is what I'm... I'm gonna try something. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna print this off for you, Mr. Miller, and you just check it off, instead of having to get up here and say what you're gonna do. You can look at it. Be able to look at it for a moment. Alright, meanwhile, back on the farm, I'm gonna come over to your area. Councilwoman Hammond. Right there. Oh, which is that? I mean, of course, he's got the, okay. Good population over here, okay. I think the map is printing, I hope. Summer, because I'm logged into my system, it will print from my printing printer setting? Okay, I think. Alright, good deal. Okay. Okay, let's see. Print setup. Hold on, let me make sure this is what I want to see. Yeah, he's, he's good. I think he can see this well. They don't give me an option. Yeah, hold on, let me see. Oh, duh. Bye, right there. Alright, let's see if that's, you got it? Alright, so, Mr. Miller, when I get this printout to you, you just mark off the things, and we'll move on to Councilwoman Hammond. Is that cool? I got to figure out how to get, fill it up. So, in order for us to get to, and of course, when we talk about the lines, we have to draw on an actual road, a line. We can't make those up. So we're probably, since Mr. Miller has given us the side, what we'll do is, we'll cut through, Martin Luther King will be our segue road through to Councilwoman Hammond's district. So she's gonna start off at about Camp Road.
Which road supervisor?
We're gonna, we're gonna jog up Martin Luther King Road, because there's no other way to slice yours on a straight line, I should say. It's no other way to get to your district unless we're on a straight line. So the only way I can get there is come from Thorn Tree Road, and then take a jog down Martin Luther King. So it'll be, oops, like this way, to get to your district. Because it has to connect his, connect with his. So you see right here, wait a minute. I'm telling you, you see, and I have the ability to blow it up. So this would be? What do you want me to do? Oh, okay, moving up. To get there, we'll come down Old Gapway Road, the Thorn Tree Road. And then we'll enter your area here.
Okay.
Just to keep it on a straight line.
Okay, we can, we can look at some of the central area, since that's closer to his district, to kind of keep it even mesh. And...
So we took him out? In this area here?
Millwood, Nexon, Sims Reach.
Norrie, Ivory, Nexon.
Gray Road, Turpentine Road.
Yeah. Limestone, Fish Camp?
Yes.
Sandhurst. So we're looking at Millwood, Turpentine, we're looking at this side?
Yes.
Alright, so our cutoff point will be? The Twins Road?
Yep, that'll work.
Alright, so write, write these boundaries down. Her boundary is the Twins Road. Let me try to figure out another boundary. And we'll look for anything that's inside of there. So it'll probably be Twins Road. Now, we can either slice this at... Twins Road. Oops. We're gonna have to take a short jog up Thurgood Marshall Highway. You lose, you would be putting this piece of Thurgood Marshall on the line. Right in here. Because in order to access it.
Okay. Alright, I'm good with that.
Now, we can stay on this side of the road.
Right.
And then we'll take Charity Lane. Oh, I'm sorry, Summer, call this the other, it's Kane Branch Road. Let's look at Sims Reach.
Yep.
This part, Sims Reach. So we got Kane Branch to Sims Reach, so we come from here to here. Nexon Road. That's where I'm drawing the lines at.
Okay.
And... Millwood. Gray Road, Millwood Road, Gray Road, Turpentine Road, Old Place.
McKee, McKee Road.
Alright, so, let's see what happens with that.
Alright.
Let's see. Coming through Thorn Tree. Entering. So Summer, just documented, we're, we're gonna be coming in on Martin Luther King. We're also gonna take Marble Road, Fish Camp Road, Sandhurst Road. And that'll give her the other part of Millwood.
Yes.
Millwood, Nexon, Ivory. All these down in here. Want to make sure. Alright, Councilwoman, I'm gonna, I will, we'll get all these written. And that's a good bit of, that's a good bit of roads right there. Well, we may need them. You talking about this? Alright, I'm gonna print this map as closely as I can, so we can make sure we captured everything you talked about. Kane Branch was our other border. And then you just look, you'll have, you'll be able to take a look at it. I hear it. How did I guess that's what you said? Summer, you see I'm over here fumbling? Alright, there you go. Let's try that. Thank you. No, I just wanted, we, well, we will be in just a second. Soon as she looks us over and verifies this is what she's able to do, and then we should have, and it looks like we got enough, I don't know, till we, we get, we copy all the numbers down and get them, the roads down and get them to eat it. And then I have to subtract how much... Subtract, Torrance, can you subtract the ones that, those? Never mind. Never mind, I got them all.
The sheet here has changed now for Councilwoman Miller's district, am I correct? Y'all going over that right now?
Yeah, he did, yeah, he, I'm removing the num, I'm getting an account of the numbers he wanted to keep. And, and then I, once I add them up, I'll know what's needed from Councilwoman Hammond.
So can he get that, because he's, he want to make sure, do you know what he's giving up?
Can he get?
He do give him a list of, a sheet like that, of the ones he's gonna keep, I guess. What he's gonna provide to them, so they, they can study at the weekend of what they're giving up, or what they're keeping.
I just printed the map of what he's giving up. So, he's only, I mean, I can tell him, yeah, I can tell him how many you're giving up, because... Let me write, let me write this down. Um... Waiting on you. Yes? Look on your list for Glad Road. Glad Road, Glad, G-L-A-D. Okay, that's fine. We just need to make sure they clear, so that we can advise the citizens of that. Alright. No, not, yes, sir. Alright. Um, we, since we no longer have a quorum... Alright, I'm just, all I'm doing right now is just trying to pull the numbers off that, Mr., Councilman... My mind is thinking, Councilman Miller, I'm just, I'm adding the numbers that he would like for us to keep. So I'm just adding that portion up. And I'm writing the road names down that he wants to keep. And then from that point, we can just subtract. Once we get one of the numbers, we can subtract from the total number and get how much Mr. Woods is gonna need. No, they didn't, that's not, she didn't come down it far.
Yeah, whatever it is we need to make this correct, I'm willing to work with it, make sure we make it correct, so we can move on.
So, in order for you to capture a Broomstraw Road in that, In order for you to capture a Broomstraw Road in that. You, you'd have to. You'd have to give up this area. Y'all, see what I'm saying? You can't just say, I'm gonna pick this road and you can take this road. It has to be a connecting road. And every area that's in that area must be attached to that district, either on the right side of the road or the left side of the road. Broomstraw is kind of sort of in the center, which means, yeah, see, watch your map. So, um, Broomstraw Road is here. So that's a far jump from anything over here. So if he, if he did jog down Coastline Road, right, and hit Broomstraw Road. He'd have to take Edwin, Wallace, and all of this, and everything that's included in this. Yeah, you gotta follow the lines. Okay, so, um, we'll look at the option that we're working through now with Councilwoman Hammond. And we will use the other one also as a, another Plan B. I believe that in my, somewhat of my opinion, this is a big area. But let's see how much she's gonna have in her area that's gonna cover, and then we can always pull back this way. But just know that you're gonna take away. All of this section right here in order to get even part of. Was that part of Broomstraw Road? Let me think, yeah, because Broomstraw Road kind of runs the whole length of this. So you would be taking everything in here, I'll pull this out. So mind you, you're talking about this whole section right here, it's coming out, everything that's within there. Now you let Broomstraw be your boundary. Yeah, Broomstraw can be your boundary. Versus Marion Church Road.
But he'll still be giving up a lot, a lot of, um, number two? If, if Broomstraw is his boundary, as opposed to Marion Church Road, wouldn't that mean you'd be giving up more than he's given up with Marion being his boundary?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if he can afford that many or not.
Okay, he's just saying that Broomstraw Road, okay, I'm saying that my boundary would be Marion Road. Which is, um. On the. Broomstraw is.
Oh, well.
Well.
Yeah, you'd be giving up much more numbers if you were to do that. You might be less, you're barring state, Marion Church, to see where that, where that would put us then.
Yeah, you're, can you see that, Mr. Miller? You're gonna be losing.
No, I, 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 I guess because, uh. I'm looking at Marion Church, Marion Church would run. Out to Seaboard. And then it would go up to 521.
Uh, and, in this case, um, you, Marion Church is your border, so we're not going anywhere past Seaboard Road. So how he would, we would, um, we would obtain, he said, um, Marion is the border. So we would be coming, utilizing Thorn Tree Road. Thorn Tree Road. Coming through here. Taking a portion of Martin Luther King. And Fif, and 521. And if you were gonna take the entire Marion Church Road. Or, um, if you're gonna, if you were actually going to take Marion Church Road, which would be giving Marion Church Road. Or is that just your, your stop point? And everything to the, um, I hate the fact I'm directionally challenged, so, to the east of it. Like, I'm showing you on the map, right, I'm showing you on the map, but, um. Yeah, the east and west and north and south thing, um, sometimes I get a little confused with that. Um, but if, y- y- you have, he'll take just this portion, if you want Marion Church to be your boundary, is what I'm trying to say. Is, either you want, do you want him to take Marion Church, or you don't?
No, that, that, in other words, I would have Marion Church.
Okay, so then. Right, so. You, Marion Church is your boundary, so that means he would come down Martin Luther King Junior Highway. His path would be as follows. He would, um. Come from, or, or, he would enter in from Old Gap Road, and he'd get all the way down US Highway Thorn Tree. Um, up to Martin Luther King, crossing over 521. And he would. Stay in this direction right here. And then he would be connected, if that's all he was going to get. However, your other suggestion. Was to be for him to, um, get a portion of Broomstraw Road. Which if that's the case, he would take Martin Luther King Road, again, he would. Maintain Union Road, Columbia Road, Coastline, all of Coastline, all of Morning, all of this here would come to, would go to. Which, every little road that's in this area. All the way down till you get to C, what is that road? Good, uh, Good Iron Road.
That was, that, I think that, that was what was going up on the other map.
Hmm, it's. Possible. I can't remember that one off the, let me see the other map. You got it? The one that they saw, the other, the other map. So it's kind of taking this whole section out from you. It's, it's gonna be up to how you, what you want me to evaluate. Um, we can give them a few different options. You just all had to tell me which option you want to select, so we can get it prepared and, and Edith can get the numbers ready.
Okay, so the, the. First option would be, uh, Marion Church Road.
Okay. Marion Church Road as a boundary. So, n, anything, okay? So we got in, within there. As stated earlier, we'll have to pull Thorn Tree Road. Glad Road, Union Road. Portion of Martin Luther King. Portion of Dixie Road, all the way to Marion Church Road. So you'd be picking up Dixie Road, you writing as I call it out, uh, right as I call it out for me. So we can get the number, it, it's just easier for me to get those to Edith. So he's gonna come through Old Gapway Road, crossing into his district. Thorn Tree Road, Glad Road. US 521. Looking at the address range on 521 from 7321, I'm sorry, I meant, try that again. Looking at the address range. From 521.
521, I think.
Starting at seven. 7621, all we have to, 7771. My bad. My fingers moving faster than my brain. Alright, so, um. This is where we're. And we got a portion of. Martin Luther King. Address range, I don't know. Starting at, um. Four. 4,036. Up into, up until. 4,006. 4,065. Four, 4,04654. Up to that point. You also now have Union Road. Columbia Road. Dixie Road. Come, did I say Columbia? Coastline Road. Morning Star. And Denver Road. So that should be everything that should be planned, the next option. So you're looking at everything that's, uh. Basically, this is your boundaries. Mr. Miller, right in here. Those down in here. And Martin Luther King. And it kind of connects through here, so it'd be anything that's within here, keeping Marion Church Road in play for you. Summer, I'm gonna print, and then I'm gonna mark this up, and he should be able to see it a little clearer, right? That's about what you want?
Yes.
Okay. Not the fact I can't see. Yeah, this thing's blurry. Mm-hmm, he just trying to get his plan out of. His plan, the roads he want us to check in on his, that he's willing to give up, and then we'll do yours, uh, real quick. Let me take this area again. Mount, there it is. So, Mr. Miller, you'll be looking, be able to look at that. Well, I'll be there. Okay, hang on, let me redo that. Yeah, that kind of, um, kind of defeat the purpose, eh? Yeah, what we do is, uh, we'll just go this. He, he stay on this side of the street, you keep having that. Yes, that's fine. Um, it's pick, so we'll, we just need to come. This side of Martin Luther King Road. And then we can execute the rest. You can keep this, you can keep this whole, whole deal in, this whole thing in play. Cutting that a little close, huh? Ah, that's funny. Okay. Too funny, man. Is that, I'm gonna add that up, hang on, y'all. Watch your, kill your cameras or, or your mics. Y'all still live? Y'all still live? Y'all still alive? Let's see, Glad. Alright, Sammy. Glad Road. I'm gonna write, I'm gonna give you a number, you write it down, and start adding this up, so we can see what number we currently have. Meanwhile. J.C., can you do me a favor? Do you have a copy of, um, this sheet here? Can you get him one, J.C., can you, uh, Summer, add up the stars? Add up just the stars only, those that are marked by star. That way, that'll give me the total number of, uh, total number. Alright. Stars, and then I will add up what he pulling out. So he. What's the name of the street? What's the name of the street? That's a star, it's insulters. Possible. She about to give it to him now. She about to do what she's doing now. She adding up all of the numbers. Just do, um. Just do, yeah, just add it in. I'm not gonna be exact, so let me add up what he's giving away. I think, I think the Glad Road must not have any voters on it, but Thorn Tree. Uh, McClary Road. Horseshoe, that's Horseshoe, I don't know why they got it like that, but yeah, just do three, must be one on Horseshoe and one on 321. That's fine. Yeah, go ahead. I ain't never seen that before. That's interesting. Alright, I'm gonna get Dixie Road up until Martin Luther King Road. Dixie Road.
It's 636.
Alright, 636?
Yeah, with the stars.
Okay, I'm, I'm getting ready to give you this number in just a second. Coastline Road. Martin Luther King Road, already Coastline Road. And Coastline, MMOK, and then Morning Star. Alright, so for, um, Sammy, uh, just write that number down, that's the main number. We subtracting that number. Okay, just write that down. I need you to add something else up. 23 Thorn Tree Road. One for Union Road. Uh, give me four for Coastline Road. Give me... We can take a gamble and say, I had to guess Martin Luther King, OK Drive. Let's try to get 28 from MMOK Drive for that portion, 28. And we only gonna take a part of Dixie Road. 20, 22? Columbia. Four. I'm looking for Morning Star. Looking for how many people on Morning Star. There you go, see? That must be a new road then. And then we got Morning Star, no idea. So give me those numbers now. What's that equal to? That's only 82? So, Mr. Miller, roughly, you giving away about 82 people, 82. And we need minus, how many, what's the other number? We have to pick up- Six. 636 minus 82. So you got to find 554 more voters. We do. Uh, do we have to capture them, um, in District 5? So, are you good with that, Mr. Miller? You good with that? I say you, you'll only be giving up, um, 82 of your area, 82 of your voters. And you've already saw the trail that, uh-
Yes.
Okay, so you did 82. You had a total, so you're gonna keep the other 554 voters. Cause that's basically what you, the, the second Plan B map took from you. We don't know.
We don't know.
Uh-uh, cause I, I don't know the numbers on Sue's side. Ms. Edith would have to pull that information for me.
If it would be good to know how much-
Right.
That don't seem right, Joe. It doesn't seem right. How many roads did you calculate?
Seven.
Seven roads? And it was 82 votes, so that was seven?
Uh huh.
And those are all the, all the numbers you'd be giving up, 82?
Uh huh. Yeah, roads like Coastline is only like four people. Union Road's only got one. Thorn Tree, 23, Colum-, uh, um, Columbia Road, four. I don't know, the, one unknown is Morning Star. I don't know how many people are on Morning Star. How many people vote on there? No idea.
Tim, does those be one potential voter, the voter that, that voted in the previous election?
Uh, however she does it, I think, I, I don't know how she filters this out, so I don't know if it's, it, she did mention it, but I, off the top of my head, I really can't remember how she said it. But it's like, you had to have voted, you, it's either voted or, and/or of being of voting age. They include that in there. Um, not to say that you've ever voted, or, but to be of the age of voting in the household. So- Yeah, I, right. And she, is she gonna be at that meeting all day? Um, do we know? We're gonna, I'm just gonna ask if, um, she's gonna be at that meeting all day. Let me see what kinda houses you got on Morning Star. Well? Yeah, Morning Star doesn't have a whole lot of houses on it, so. Just tell her I called her and she can list the, um, once I, I'll give her the list over the phone or email her, text her the list of locations.
Okay, she's gonna text you.
Or email? The changes.
The changes. Alright, bye-bye.
Okay. Alright, so, we have to, now I'll get the list together for her. If you guys wanna wait, she doesn't get out her meeting at 12, I'd like to have the list compiled for her so she can start doing her research on it.
Okay.
We can recess till then. We can adjourn, uh, cause we don't have the numbers yet. So, we can adjourn. We need a motion for adjournment. Uh, let me just give some update. Okay, so right now, we are looking at a few other options, um, that can be looked into once our, uh, election person, our, our election director, Ms. Edith Redding, our voter and registr-, oh my gosh, my voice, I'm all off today, y'all, excuse me. Um, it's been a long week. Uh, once she gets in her office and is able to pull the data for us as, as to how many voters are in these other options, optional areas, um, then we can at least have something that we all can work with. And then I will get that information out to you guys, um, as we prepare for Tuesday's meeting. Alright, is that gonna be okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright. Uh, we need a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion.
A second. Alright, we are adjourned, thank you.